The town of Slave Lake honors and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sawage First Nation with Intreatate Territory, home to Indigenous Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. That's a dramatic.
Councilor Adams, do you have an amendment?
Okay, go ahead then.
I'd like to add in a report from the library, if I could please.
Sure, under the committee minutes. Hey, we can add that in after the.
Perfect.
Perfect. Yes, sir.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor? And that is carried. Okay. Well, we have our delegation up first. To.
Good evening.
Hi.
It's great to see all of you again.
Nice to see you as well. We've got the presentation here and take your time and whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
For sure. Is this on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And if you can just, I give your name and what you do with STARS, that'd be great too.
Okay. So, thank you again. It's my pleasure to bring you an annual update of STARS. I'm Glenda Farnin, the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for STARS for Alberta and Eastern B C. So, um. Is it possible to make that full screen? Without the sidebar? Or?
We have it on our.
Okay, you do. Okay, okay, thank you. So this year, STARS is celebrating forty years of serving Albertans. So we are very, very grateful to all of our partnerships that have sustained our being able to provide emergency services and critical care for forty years. Um, this slide, thank you. So we currently, we do, we have secured another long-term ten-year service agreement with Alberta Health Services. This time now for fifteen million dollars block funding. So this represents forty-four percent of our operational costs for three bases in Alberta, leaving us fifty-six percent that still must be fundraised. Currently, our lottery, our STARS lottery is underway now as we speak till the end of this month. And that is a significant support in providing roughly eleven million dollars net per year. So that basically pays for one base in Alberta. So when, um, when residents are willing to, you know, help and buy a lottery ticket, then that is, you know, really a key resource in securing funds for one base every year in Alberta. Next slide, please. So this is showing us where we're at now with our municipal support across the province of Alberta and into Eastern B C. So it is a very much a united effort that supports essential services for all. Since I last updated you last year, we have added ten more rural municipal partners as well as fifteen urban municipalities. So we are now at ninety-four percent of the entire province in partnership. Seventy-five percent of these are regional leaders, which includes M D L S R as well. So basically to, to explain this, the white areas are those that are still not currently non-supporters. Anything that is gray, these are supporters that are less than the two dollar per capita minimum that we have requested. All of the navy blue and teal are all regional leaders at anywhere from two dollar per capita to ninety dollars per capita. The teal green areas are those that are regional provincial leaders who are represented on the helicopter, having cumulatively given over five hundred thousand dollars to date. So their logos are all represented on the helicopter. And the red outlines show all of the different municipalities where every town and village that lies within their boundaries is also a supporter along with their county. Last year, we were able to welcome Birch Hills County, so they had a logo unveiling now, which brought it to nine. And all of Northern East River Regional District in B C, the entire area is also a supporter and a regional leader. Next slide, please. So this is giving us an opportunity to have a look at a fifteen-year mission report now throughout Town of Slave Lake as well as M D L S R. So for Slave Lake Hospital, critical inter-facility transfers as well as Slave Lake scene calls in your immediate area. And we've also done a search and rescue in your area as well. So Slave Lake is averaging, when we talk about Town of Slave Lake, about seven point four, on an annual average, about seven point four missions per year. Also, including then a total of one hundred and forty-four missions flown within the M D L S R over the fifteen years. Next slide, please. This is to show you to date on our postal code project. And so with this, Slave Lake, if we can just scroll up a little bit, please. The other way. Right there. So resident communities, so Slave Lake has had a total of forty residents flown since two thousand and ten that have a Slave Lake postal code. In total, fifty-six in total within M D L S R. On the right-hand side now, this shows that out of the fifty-six total area residents flown, forty were Slave Lake residents, twenty-nine residents were actually picked up in Slave Lake, twenty-seven of the total fifty-six were flown from twelve other locations. And so when we scroll back down, please, to show you the map and the areas where all the red dots lie, you can see outside of M D, M D L S R's boundaries, all the different areas where residents have been picked up by STARS and flown. So this is really a testament to the value of partnership in the fact that your residents have access to STARS all across Western Canada where we have six bases. So even they may travel into Manitoba or Saskatchewan or Eastern B C and be flown. And more importantly, partnership allows that this is done with no cost to the patient. Next slide, please. So STARS is borderless. We are six bases across Western Canada now. We average eleven missions per day. I wanted to give you an insight into a day in the life of STARS crew. So averaging eleven missions per day, this particular day shows eighteen different dispatches. If we scroll up just a little bit, please. Thank you. And so showing you the STARS base that was dispatched, the mission type, meaning it was either a critical inter-facility transfer or a scene call. Description really does show the critical nature of what can happen all in one day's time when you look at the different types of descriptions for the calls that were needed that particular day. Disposition shows the patient was transported by STARS. Or number three, that the patient we had brought, it was a neonatal baby. We brought the NICU team with us and that baby was transported by ground ambulance with the specialty team. If you scroll back down a little more, then mission canceled. So after we got more information in the Emergency Link Center, our transport physicians determined that we were no law, it was not critical. And so we were turned around to be ready for the next critical mission and that patient went by ground ambulance. The one after that mission canceled alternate transport. So again, it was determined that fixed wing was probably a better option. And so we were turned around and that patient went fixed wing. If you look at number ten, so our crews are, they go on all modes of transport to provide critical care. So whether it's, we may go on ground ambulance, we may go on fixed wing with a critical patient. So this particular patient was not able to fly. And so we had our team go by ground ambulance with this particular patient. But it really does show you the critical nature of what can happen in the day. Next slide, please. After thirty-seven years, we flew our longest mission. This was a life-saving mission for a hunter in the very northernmost rugged mountains of Northern B C. It occurred at night. It occurred on a riverbank. So we were able to coordinate through our Emergency Link Center, all the different areas where they could preset that we would be arriving for fuel. And so it kind of shows you on the tracks there, leaving from Grand Prairie, going to Fort Nelson to refuel, then going to Che House and going combing the riverbank area in order to locate the patient in the dark. We were this patient's only hope for survival. We were the only asset that can fly at night. We were bringing the intensive care unit environment. We were bringing blood onboard, everything that this patient required. So once we located him, we were able to stabilize, then finally package the patient, put him onboard. We had to fly to Watson Lake in order to refuel and then back to Fort Nelson for a top-up. So more than twenty-four hundred liters of fuel used, seventeen hundred kilometers flown. They said you fly in a straight line. It was flying from Calgary to Los Angeles. Eight point two total flight hours, more than importantly, more than five hours in the air managing a critical patient in order to get him back to Grand Prairie where fixed wing was ready and, and able to, we just immediately transferred from the helicopter to fixed wing. He was flown to the cardiac cath lab. He was reunited with his crew out of Grand Prairie as well, him and his family. One life saved. More importantly, really does speak to our mission, providing critical care anywhere. Next slide, please. There's also, this is brand new, new medication by fibrinogen now for hemorrhage control. In the past, in the past few years, we have seen so many really severe patients for trauma where, you know, they are risking to bleed out. And so, you know, it's been more than ten years now that we carry blood onboard. We carry two units of universal blood onboard. Now, because of these types of patients, and we're seeing an increase in that, we have increased to carrying four units of universal blood onboard. As well now with the new fibrinogen, once we have this type of patient, we can apply the first two units of blood and then apply the hemorrhage, hemorrhage control with the fibrinogen, which helps these patients to build blood clotting. So in that case, then we can apply the second two units of blood while we're en route to the tertiary care center. And this buys that patient extra time so that they are not bleeding out. This is a huge advancement in critical care, especially managing severe trauma patients. Next slide, please. In closing, would like to say thank you. Continue to work with your council, appreciate your council's time. Once again, would like to ask you and request you to consider to become a partner with STARS and to join as on the map, ninety-four percent of the entire province, M D L S R has also had a couple of years joined on. They are at a regional leader status, meaning they are giving the two dollar per capita. Our request to you is, more importantly, the partnership. We'd like to ask for your consideration of a dollar per capita, which would consider you as a municipal partner. Or if you're willing to match and, and also do what the M D L S R is doing as a regional leader, which is the minimum two dollar per capita request. Either way, more importantly, it's the united effort across the entire province to ensure that we all have a robust health and safety network. We are now providing physical response as well as virtual care consultation. This is a huge advancement for your local medical professionals and your local hospital. We can now provide critical care even if the helicopter is not coming. If the patient may be going by a different mode of transport, all of these different factors, we can still provide critical care virtually and work very closely with your medical professionals. So it's another advancement for rural communities like Town of Slave Lake. So we really do appreciate your consideration to partner with STARS.
Thank you very much. So we don't want to counsel for any comments or for questions or anything else? Well, it's a very fantastic presentation. Thank you very much. You're incredibly knowledgeable and we'll have a conversation about that in the, in the next section here. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I did bring you your, the new fortieth anniversary calendar as well as a new newsletter and please pass on a set to your fire department because we appreciate working with them very much.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Doctor Gammick.
Make a motion to accept the delegation report as information.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor? And that is carried. So now we can move forward into the business arising from the delegation here. There was a request for funding, so we can open up the floor for discussion. Counselor Adams.
What are we classes are per capita right now? Seven thousand one hundred and eight or is it?
Yeah, I was just looking at that around that number. That's not the exact number, but it's close.
Just seven thousand.
Okay.
I like the, I'll trim and then I like the, the two options with the dollar and the two dollars. When we take a look at the fact that there were seven point four missions every year averaging in the Town of Slave Lake, to me, a thousand dollars a mission to have no cost to the patient to be flown out seems math-wise, that makes sense. I like to look at the numbers in, in a different way. I would like to think if I was in a remote accident, there would be some hope of, of some, something coming. I think for me personally, I would agree with the municipal partner for this year of, of the dollar. Out of our unrestricted surplus, I think there's incredible value for there and there is calls in our, in our region. So that is my two cents. Counselor Gammick.
There is no cost to the patient, whether you give them the money or not.
True, but if we'd ninety-four percent of the province in my mind is covered, I think this is something that partnership makes sense to me.
I'm, I don't enjoy all the healthcare stuff getting offloaded on municipalities and all the other things they offload, but that's my opinion. This, this is came every year and it's never made, it's come before budget usually, which is helpful. And it's always got a cut at some point, but I, I'm not for it, even if it came before at this point, it's, uh, we have enough getting offloaded on us and it's a fantastic service. But I don't think municipalities should have to pay for it.
Counselor Adams.
How does this impact, since you're here? How does this impact the services that we offer and how much is, we have to sit on site waiting for other modes of transport? Or would this, like, how would this funding?
So we, there's a terminology that we use, a golden hour. So from the time of the incident to getting critical care of the patient was in that, is in that first hour. One of the issues of where we're located is distance. We're not close to a base by any means. So we usually get ground ambulance first and then STARS when they fly will be second on scene. They come with a lot of expertise, normally some type of highly trained nurse or doctor if required. Just for your information, based on their, their numbers since two thousand and ten, at that number of seven thousand for capita, per capita, you're looking at about twenty-four hundred dollars a call out every time they fly here. That's about what you'd be investing in because they only fly to Slave Lake about two point nine times a year based on their numbers. So I've used, I've been on scene with STARS many times. I appreciate their service. They don't come here a lot, based on my experience. They do fly to the airport because they can fuel up when they get there. But they don't fly to scene as much as we probably request them. I could, I don't have the numbers, but we're probably at the fifty percent request versus flying just due to distance or they're very busy service as well. So they have to prioritize their calls. So it's not something that every time that you want them, they come. And then weather and other things like that play into that as well. Huge supporter of the service. I see the other side of it as well. My thoughts.
Counselor Gammick.
Sounds like we're on a similar page, but a follow-up. So you request it and they can't come for multitude of reasons. What's your backup plan? Like, what are you, are you using local people or how do you get out of your conundrum when, when they don't come?
Ground ambulance. So ninety-nine percent of our patients are transported by ground. We did have an incident up in the Martin Hills last year. There was three patients, so STARS flew one, a local helicopter company flew one and we ground transported in a pickup truck the third patient. So we do have options with our local companies. They're not trained by any means, but they are here. But STARS, if STARS doesn't come, usually it's ground transport. It's just a time. It takes ground transport obviously a lot longer. They can also come to Slave Lake and either go fixed wing or helicopter if STARS can fly here to the city if they need to.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Vincent? Okay, well, then I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion to fund as a municipal partner, the one dollar per capita to the STARS and out of unrestricted surplus. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion to that? Counselor Adams.
One last minute comment.
No worries.
I wouldn't mind this coming up in discussion then for the next budget. Rather than necessarily right now, I kind of wish this came out in November would have been ideal. But if we can flag this up knowing it's coming up every year to have that discussion, even if they haven't done a presentation, knowing that the ask is always similar, two bucks, one buck. I think I'd like to see that put on, on an action list or on that instead of necessarily funding it.
Any further comments? Okay, called a question those in favor? All those opposed? And that is defeated. Okay, let's move along.
Motion for that, Steve.
We can do that with the management tax list later.
Yeah, well, we'll do it now, I guess.
Okay, good.
Make a motion for administration to bring that back in November as part of our budgeting process. Well, whoever's here, part of their budgeting process.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, let's move on to our reports of new business. We have the mill rate bylaw. Roland, the floor is yours.
Counsel, the purpose of tonight's report is just to bring the mill rate with the budget passed. We've gone and determined what the mill rate is for two thousand and twenty-five. As for the background, I've just outlined the sections of the MGA that states the town has to have this bylaw placed by May first. As for the actual mill rates itself, below here, we have the assessed values. So assessment growth, addition of new roles remains unchanged from the prior year. There were fifty-three, fifty-three roles that changed from non-taxable to taxable status in the year, mainly as a result of the forney lot sales. Taxable assessment on a year-over-year basis has increased forty point five million or three percent. Residential assessment, including multifamily dwellings and condominiums, has seen an increase in assessed value of approximately fifteen million dollars or two point three two percent. Commercial and industrial assessments have seen an increase of approximately twelve million dollars or five percent. And linear assessments have increased two million dollars or thirteen point six two percent. And the remaining non-taxable assessment roles have increased by eleven point seven million or four point four six percent over last year. Overall, what does this do? Because we had a zero percent tax rate, you'll see some of the mill rates drop a little bit. People should be paying exactly what they paid last year, more or less. The other thing to note here though, where people will see an increase on their tax bill is the school requisitions. So I have noted here, these have increased significantly over last year. The additional tax collection that the town has required is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or a nine percent increase over the previous year. So that is a significant chunk. And when I did that, the average homeowner could possibly see anywhere between sixty-five to a hundred dollars extra on their, on their tax bill. So their town portion is going to fluctuate a little bit up or a little bit down, but you will see this school requisition portion on your tax bill. Overall, the mill rate changes for residential and farmland go from nine point three four in two thousand and twenty-four to nine point oh three in two thousand and twenty-five. Non-residential will have a change from thirteen point eight in two thousand and twenty-four to thirteen point three eight. The combined mill rates per municipal school and seniors for residential will change from twelve point one seven in two thousand and twenty-four to twelve point oh three in two thousand and twenty-five. And the non-residential linear combined rate will change from seventeen point eight seven in two thousand and twenty-four to seventeen point four six in two thousand and twenty-five. And with that, I'm open for any questions?
Counselor Adams.
For the benefit of the public, can you explain what non-taxable assessment is?
So non-taxable assessments are just assessment roles in the community like schools, hospitals, provincial buildings, anything that's town-owned. Those like, those types of buildings. So we do have a fairly good chunk of that, like the town office, the government center, town shop, all the schools, things of that nature. Churches as well.
Hospital too.
Hospital, yeah.
Okay, is, did the province, when they increased their requisition to us, did they give an explanation as to why they're throwing a nine percent increase rather than another method or they don't care, they just say, give us the money?
Yeah, from our last, I mean, that was, I think, flowing throughout the, the provincial budget rather than flowing down on, on my pipeline.
Counselor Gammick.
I would just guess it's that seven hundred and fifty dollars they told you you're saving? They're just trying to get the money from somewhere else.
Yeah.
Any further comments, questions? Okay. Counselor Adams.
Hi, Kim.
I'd like to make a motion to get first reading of tax rate bylaws zero seven dash two zero two five.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor? And that is carried. Counselor Gammick.
Motion that council give second reading of tax rate bylaw number zero seven dash two zero two five.
No further discussion. Called a question those in favor? That is carried. Counselor Hughes.
I move that council give unanimous consent to third reading of tax rate bylaw zero seven dash two thousand and twenty-five.
Further discussion? Called a question those in favor? It's carried. Counselor Choba.
I move that council give third reading to tax rate bylaw number zero seven dash two zero two five.
Any further discussion? Called a question those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roland.
Next up, we have the derelict properties bylaw. Josh?
Good evening, your worshiping council. This, Derelict Property Bylaw is, is a followed from the direction of, of mayor and council in July of two thousand and twenty-four. At the July ninth, twenty twenty-four Committee, the whole a report from administration was given to council about how to address derelict properties within town limits using examples from the city of Edmonton and other municipalities in Alberta by creating a property tax subclass for derelict properties. Council directed administration to draft a proposal to amend the property tax bylaw to include a derelict property tax subclass. The idea of creating this subclass is to, uh, tax is, is to address the derelict or problem properties within the Town of Slave Lake. In this way, the, uh, according to the, this, the definition in this bylaw, a problem property or derelict property is a property that contains a fully or partially constructed improvement designed to have a residential living area where improvement shows serious signs of neglect, is dilapidated, falling into disrepair or uninhabitable, including but not limited to improvements that are deserted or abandoned, which are partially or fully boarded up or secured, for which an order indicating an improvement or the property is unfit for habitation have been issued, which were abandoned while in the process. which were abandoned while in the process of being constructed without construction being complete or which were abandoned while in the process of demolition without demolition being complete. So the uh, uh, the idea is that properties that fall onto this category are considered unsafe for habitation, obviously, and they also pose a risk for fires, attract criminal behavior of the property itself and the surrounding area. And then that for that, it discourages investment. It, uh, so having um uh, this uh bylaw that would uh triple the rate of property taxes uh, the regular rate in order to um discourage uh, this uh uh, discourage the property being left in this state. This definition was copied from the city of Edmonton's twenty twenty-four property tax and supplementary property tax bylaw and is the definition used uh, used in uh, this cur, our current bylaw here, uh, we're on the table. Uh, properties assessed as derelict using this definition will be ta, will be taxed as uh, three times the normal tax rate, as I mentioned. And uh, and this will act as an incentive. Uh, as I, it also, in addition to acting as an incentive, it will also help recover costs and resources spent by enforcement services in attempts to address the derelict properties in question. If a property is assessed as derelict under this definition by the municipal tax assessor by the end of the tax year or December thirty-first, the property, property will go on the tax roll in the new year at the new tax rate. And uh, this is also meant to coincide with our, uh, the, uh, the town of Slave Lake's uh, community standards bylaw. Uh, if a property is uh, does, is not um meets this definition and has not been addressed by the uh, uh uh, been addressed or the, had the own, property owner has not complied with requests to redevelop or to demolish their property. Uh, this will be at, uh, bylaw will act as a supplement as a, the next step. Uh, in terms of uh uh, options for council, uh, one council gives with unanimous consent, all three readings to the derelict residential property tax subclass bylaw number uh, zero eight twenty twenty-five. Uh, option two, council rejects the reading of the derelict property tax subclass bylaw number zero eight twenty twenty-five. Uh, resource impacts, there'd be minimal. This bylaw gives enforcement services an additional tool to address derelict properties as part of their regular duties. Uh, it's not uh, um, and uh implications, uh, the new internal policy has been drafted that com, that complements this bylaw, which is, you'll see is included. Uh, gives direction for administration and enforcement services detailing procedures to address the prop, properties and that comply with this bylaw and also with the bylaw twenty-two, two uh, zero one seven. Uh, the communication strategy, our communication strategy was through compliance and tax assessment notices. And uh, relation to strategic planning, mission statement revision statement, this bylaw relates to the town's vision statement by helping to protect its growing population, enhance its quality of life by protecting that of the, the safety of its residents and protecting investment in our community. The uh uh, the recommendation to council is to give with unanimous consent, all three readings to the derelict residential property tax subclass bylaw. And with that, I am open to questions.
Counselor Hughes. Thank you very much, Josh. Um, just curious and just wanting clarification on this. You mentioned residential several times in here. This only is going to cover residential, correct? This is not going to apply to commercial properties in any way?
Yes, this is just the residential properties, correct?
Okay, and is it like standard, like are there other municipalities that also have this in place for commercial properties also?
Um, not to my understanding, uh, the city of Edmonton uh is strictly with the uh, derelict residential properties and also, but identical bylaws, but like in Edmonton, I've been passed in Wataasquin, also in Athabasca and also the town of Cardston. So it is kind of in a uh, a strategy that's being implemented and it's being adopted by
A just residential.
Yes, as far as, as far as I'm aware, yes, it is just residential properties.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Adams.
You stole my thunder. I'm gonna expand on that as well, again, uh, why? Uh, I'm just thinking of examples that can happen within the community. Uh, I get it in a city, you're talking vast areas. Uh, I mean, we have within residential areas, multiple zoning structures that could still house and whatever for when derelict, why are we limiting this just to residential?
Uh, this, uh, the example that we have is uh, that we've borrowed from municipalities, where it's just meant to address residential to protect residents. Uh, I don't, I'm not uh, uh, familiar with what uh, how that would, it, the approach might be different for with uh, with uh say, commercial properties, but I'm not sure, uh, it's just, this is just the area focus that we've so wanted to stick, stuck with and uh, this is how it's been done in other municipalities. We can definitely look into including some derelict residential properties if you've, uh, but uh, as of right now, we don't have that information.
This is a pretty new initiative, uh, given, uh, city of Edmonton was really the more bear this, this whole thing. Um, and so there's a little bit different rules between commercial and residential, what you can and cannot do. Um, I don't know, there's been some recent changes in the MGA that kind of opened up some more stuff on the commercial side. Um, however, at the time when we did all this, right, it was just opened up to residential. So we were kind of following the lead that kind of other communities took this initiative on. And reading about it, it has been quite successful on the residential side. Now we can go back and kind of see, is this something applicable to commercial and industrial? Um, but we need further research on that.
Well, I know based on past now, those properties that I would say were in question have since uh, gotten, got better ownership and they're now being cared for. But I can think of a number of spots which uh, were CDC or zone C two that would have easily have fallen into a derelict property situation that was using, people were using it as either for drugs to sleep in, it was just terrible. But so to limit this, I would like to see uh, administration explore this to go beyond just uh, residential and see if it can be in some of these ones, especially when they're within a primarily residential area and we have the spot zone of a C four or one of a uh, CDC. I'd like to see us explore that a little further. Otherwise, I like the direction this is going. I think it gives us another tool in our belt to help the problems that we are having and uh, I appreciate the effort on putting it forward. Thank you.
I see no issue with also having commercial in there. However, I think it would have to be a second and separate bylaw. Um, the way this is written, obviously, it's talks about have, like living in, in these properties and they're being unlivable or classified as such. Um, but we could look at if council wishes to have a motion for the commercial, um, a separate commercial bylaw to to come forward with, with additional information.
We can definitely look. I know that even this residential one was a very uh innovative approach by the city of Edmonton and its interpretation of the MGA and so far uh, to date, we don't know if there's been any challenges. So it is uh, kind of out there on the uh, on the business one. Um, and that's a little bit more stringent than one you can, can do, but we'll definitely take that back and kind of say, hey, is this something that, that we can go forward? It runs in my mind that at the time when we were doing this, uh, it definitely was not an option. Um, but I know there's been a little bit of changes there and it gives us a little bit of leeway, so we can definitely investigate that further.
So keeping in mind that for those properties that you're speaking of, Steve, we still have our community standards bylaw. And our enforcement services can use our unsavvy properties and things like that for some of those. So if we're made aware of them, we can definitely use some of our other tools in the toolbox until such time as another bylaw is created.
Counselor Adams.
I move to give first reading to derelict presidential property tax subclass bylaw zero eight two zero two five.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called question was in favor, that is carried. Counselor Choba.
I move to give second reading to derelict residential property tax the bu, subclass bylaw zero eight dash two zero two five.
Further discussion, called a question was in favor. That is carried, Counselor Grammick.
Move to give unanimous consent for a third reading of derelict residential property tax subclass bylaw number zero eight dash two zero two five.
Further discussion, called a question was in favor. That is carried, Counselor Hughes.
I move to give third reading to derelict residential property tax subclass bylaw zero eight dash two zero two five.
Any further discussion, called a question those in favor and that is carried. Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, so on top of that, I'd like to, what am I doing here? Task administration to explore um, a possible derelict commercial slash industrial property tax subclass bylaw.
That works.
Does that work for you, Ashley?
Any further discussion, called a question was in favor and that is carried. Okay. Next up, Alex, this is your report, the communication station proposal for Shurter Park.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So uh, this report tonight is a follow-up to the uh, presentation that was on February fourth from AHS. AHS came and was requesting permission to install a communication board at Shurter Park. Uh, they also have some other locations within the town and some school parks. Uh, one of the questions that was brought forth was who would ultimately be responsible for the board and what happens if there was any damages? So we met with AHS over a couple of different uh, dates with some communication. They currently don't have any boards in Alberta. They do have some down east in Montreal. Uh, they, they, so far, the, the, the boards are holding up, they're, they have a very good lifespan. One of the comments was about graffiti. So we do have a small parks budget if we had to go and wipe them down. Uh, AHS is fully aware that these boards belong to them and if they're damaged, they're their responsibility. So the comments back and forth were if somebody was to kick it or break it or make it so it wasn't usable anymore, it would be taken down and they would be notified that the board is no longer usable. They can decide to put up a new one or to no longer have them. Um, so there, we do have a small parks budget. We could go out and wipe them down if we had to, which we've done with other things in the, in our parks. Anything major would fall back to AHS and they would have to decide if they want to pursue it. So we, we bring forth the information that we still feel that it's recommended to proceed with these boards. Uh, they are working with a current, they are working currently to find a, a builder in Alberta to build the boards. And uh, and they'll have some more information on lifespan. Currently, the ones in Montreal, they're estimating between twelve to fifteen years of lifespan.
Counselor Adams.
So nothing as far as them doing any sort of maintenance on or anything like that, just if it's totally failed, we take our small little budget to do whatever we can for parks and apply it to the boards.
No, so if, if somebody was to graffiti it, we would attempt to try and clean it.
Yeah.
If not spend a bunch of time on it, if that doesn't work, they would be notified, we would, and if it's completely damaged, it would come down. And they can decide to put another one up or scrap the project. Um, so far in Montreal, I don't know the locations, they have had very little issues with them. They're very popular in the parks they're in. Um, again, we had conversations about Slave Lake and things that can and potentially could happen in Slave Lake. They still want to push forward with the project. They still feel it'll be very valuable and they understand that they ultimately could lose a board in a, in a year or two years.
I mean, I'm totally in favor of this thing. I do, I love the idea. Uh, I'm just don't want to get straddled with this ongoing problem like we have with other.
Yep. So, so we do have a small park screw and they do.
Thank you.
Yeah, they do spend time in the parks and they would keep an eye on them as our other, as all our other facilities.
Uh, I move to authorize the installation of the communication board in Shurter Park.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor and that is carried. Fornier Place lot sales.
So, thank you, Mayor Council. I'm also presenting this one on behalf of planning development tonight. Uh, so as you're aware, uh, we've, we've continued to push forward with some sales of some lots in Fornier Place. Um, on February twenty-fifth, council directed administration to proceed with the redistricting of the below-listed lots, which are listed in the report, from our three high-density residential to our PSL residential small planned lots. And because these were not originally included in the original sale, we just need a council motion to proceed with the sale of these eighteen lots after the uh, waiting period that we have to outline as part of the um, process.
Seems fairly straightforward. Counselor Adams.
I got my mic on, I might as well. Uh, move to advertise and sell selected residential lots in Fornier Place for the total cost of ten thousand dollars per lot to private interested parties and to advertise the potential land sales for undermarket value as per the municipal government act for public input as regulated.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question was in favor. And that is carried. And before we move into electronic committee meeting, can we have a five-minute recess, please? Thank you. Welcome back. Next up is our electronic committee meeting report. Alex, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So the purpose of this report is to provide information to council on information regarding the Town of Slave Lake committees, boards and commissions could have, so if they could have their meetings live streamed. On December third, at a sorry, I'll start again. On the at the December third council meeting, administration was tasked with exploring options on which town of Slave Lake committees, commissions or boards could be live streamed. Upon research, we have found key information that is pertinent to council's decision. Communities that currently have selected committees live streamed are as follows. City of Edmonton, City of Calgary, City of Red Deer, Town of Okatokes, Town of Lethbridge. At this time, we could not find any towns that are comparable in size that broadcast their committees live. When reviewing the authority of council, council may task administration to change their bylaws, change the bylaws and or policies of the following committees to include live streaming. Municipal Planning Commission, Naming Committee and the Youth Advisory. The committees, boards and commissions that cannot be changed by council administration are the intermunicipal, Lesser Slave Lake Watershed, Tri-Council, Tri-Council Health, Alberta North Central Alliance, Slave Lake Library Board, Wildfire Legacy Board, Slave Lake Regional Tourism, the Community Education Committee, Children's Resource Council, Slave Lake Airport Commission, Lesser Slave Lake Regional Waste Management Services Commission, Protective Services and Disaster Services. So at this time, the Town of Slave Lake Council may ask administration to proceed with changing the procedure with the policy, within the bylaws and policies of the following committees, the MPC, Naming Committee and Youth Advisory. However, council must understand that this is a risk that may impact public members' attendance to committees, commissions or boards. So one of the comments that we got back in doing these inquiries was some of the members of the public didn't feel comfortable having their meetings livestreamed because some decisions that are or some of the discussions that take place until their actual discuss decisions are just discussions that are taking place. So you may approach the following committees if you choose the ones that I listed above. However, the request must come from council members who reside on the committee or commission or board. At this time, the administration is recommending not to proceed with taking, tasking administration to conduct live streaming for committees, commissions or boards, as this could come at a risk of losing community committee members and would also impact our IT resources as our current technology and capacity cannot support this initiative. So one thing we also found is we may need to have IT on site for support if we go to livestream all of these meetings. So one of some of the options are to proceed with the tasking administration to change the bylaws and our policies of the following committees, the MPC, the Naming Committee and the Youth Advisory Committee. To proceed with approaching the other committees as were listed above, commissions and boards to incorporate live streaming or to not proceed with live streaming committees, commissions and boards of meetings. And our recommendation is to not proceed with live streaming committees, commissions and board meetings. Any questions?
Counselor Adams.
Um, there was a couple that I I guess I'll start with, why isn't SDAB listed?
That was a that was a minor oversight, but similar to intermunicipal, that would have to be brought to the group to decide. So. I wouldn't be at this council table because it's an intermunicipal agreement and it's not written in our agreement. However, because it's a public hearing, they're broadcasted live anyways.
I don't remember ours being broadcasted live.
Uh, the last time that I did sit on, it was livestreamed. So.
Okay.
But and it's in the MGA, like those need to be live for people to sit in. And if someone was remote too, uh, say for ISDA B, someone says, I can't make it in person. I have to allow them to attend by electronic means. So that's probably why it's not captured because it's already addressed in legislation.
Okay, a couple of comments then. The some that you mentioned there, I get it why they can't be done. MPC is the one that jumps to my mind as to what I think should be public. Concerns over public members not being comfortable speaking when there's a camera there. It does take some getting used to, but it also holds you accountable. I think it is important that the MPC decisions and well, I was going to say the SDAB, but that's already covered. Is to be transparent to the public. As such, I would like us to see the MPC be moved to being online. At least for not the decision part that goes into closed, I believe. Or I can't remember the process. I haven't been on there. You go. And I think it should be definitely be streamed. Youth Advisory, that is one that I don't think should be. That's something that's we're just getting our feet wet. Kids are learning a process. I don't think that's something that needs to be out there. Naming Committee, that's another one that I don't know if it's worth necessary with the with the effort. But the MPC, I think we should move ahead with.
Counselor Hughes.
So just a couple of comments for myself. I've been sitting on MPC since the very beginning of my term. The beginning of MPC, we were actually livestreamed, reason being because of a COVID situation. So when I was brand new to that board, a couple of public members came on at the time and right away, they actually insisted of removing the livestream. Again, not comfortable at all discussing different businesses, different scenarios here and being recorded while doing it. So we did make a motion a couple of years ago to discontinue the livestream for that specific committee. Now, I would say that we would be highly at risk of losing those public members as well at this point in time. The last meeting that I was in attendance, I was the only council that was able to make that meeting. But the public members that were there expressed their extreme displeasure. And they said they would be highly uncomfortable discussing the types of topics that we do while being recorded. I would say I understand your comment about accountability and I fully support that. But I do also think that MPC minutes are available for any community members. And if someone wants to attend a meeting in person, they're more than welcome to. And we do have people that do come out to the meetings. You know, the local media, whoever is welcome to attend. So there still is that mechanism in place. But I would be highly concerned that our public members would not feel comfortable or be in favor. And and I understand, you know, where they're coming from as well, so.
Counselor Adams.
Just trying to wrap my head around that. If local media is there, public can be there. My understanding is you could still have a recording device in a public meeting. So what's the difference?
Well, I guess I would ask you how comfortable you felt being recorded here when we started sitting at this council table like I think people, some of them being business owners, et cetera, I think they are concerned about things being misconstrued or comments that are made. I know we all can be at risk of that occasionally as well in this job, and I just don't think that they're wanting to sign up for sort of that level of scrutiny, if you will, within such a small town. So that's just, and I shouldn't speak for them because, you know, that's obviously, I'm just paraphrasing sort of their commentary to me at the last meeting and also identifying with that as well, you know, as a as a community member, so.
Counselor Gammick, do you want to make?
Well, I was just going to say what Counselor Hughes said is the same vibe I get from the public members on just about every committee. But that one specifically because I'm now on it again. It has come up like, oh, man, like I could never get recorded. I don't want to get recorded. What if I say the wrong word? And I I get there's a learning curve too. But that I I think you're, we have a hard enough time filling these committees and I I think you will have trouble filling it if you're if there's that other mechanism there. And then the other part to that is like to me, you either do all or none, right? Like you you can't pick and choose what should be public and what shouldn't. And these ones don't matter as much. We should probably put Tri-Council Health public because that's super important to everyone. Like I I would, if they were all able to do it, I'd be a hundred percent in because it's probably the way of the future, but just having three and the appetite is only to have one. You're gonna, all those people are quitting. And I don't think we need people to be quitting committees. We need more people to join committees and councils and do things.
I I was just going to say the MPC was the one that had the biggest, most comments on pushback when we did ask the questions about it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's the vibe I hear.
I'll weigh in. I I share similar sentiments to the counselors, Counselor Hughes and Counselor Gammick. The additional resources for IT, I understand we did it before, but it does cause extra challenges. I think the biggest thing is we still have the public meeting and the protections in place so that if you are interested in the decisions of MPC and you are interested in what's on the agenda, you are able to go. So that being coming to the meeting, as you can see, we have a completely full council chamber right now. I think coming to meetings is important, especially maybe not every meeting, but coming to meetings is important to to educate yourself on what's going on in the town. And I feel like that same, I I like the push for that to be in person. I also think in a small town, which is why we haven't been able to find any information on towns or size is because cities and larger communities don't have the same level of small town relationships that that we do. So on MPC, you might be voting against or for one of your friends, one of your colleagues for for a decision. Now you're supposed to vote based on planning principles. So maybe the decision will be something that they, your friend, your community member, et cetera, won't won't like. And that level of public pressure when they're not signing up for something like council where it's to be expected. I think I'm not in favor of of putting that online at this time. Counselor Gavin.
Even like every council meeting in Alberta is not being streamed. Like so, so like we're going to get ahead of the curve by that much and be the small town that makes our MPCs stream before towns bigger than us aren't even doing their council meetings. Like I, I don't think that's fair for public people, but.
Counselor Adams.
Uh, two comments, I guess, on that is one. You are supposed to make these decisions based on planning principles and you have a set of rules that you're supposed to follow. So opinion and and emotion and your personal ties aren't supposed to be part of it. So maybe that is a better reason to have it public. So that you are held accountable to the to what's there. I believe that if you're willing to go behind something or do something, then that's whether it's out in public or Joe is writing about it, what's the difference? The other point to saying all or nothing, well, we don't have control of the others, so we can't go down that path. The three that are there, I think we pick the ones that should be transparent and cause the most problems, which is MPC, SDAB. The the argument of they should show up in public, I or in person, I agree. I'd love to do that, but in which case then why are we doing this? Why isn't our board then shutting that down and having people show up in person and be here? Or right? Oh, I hear. I'd be for it too, but oh, boy, there might be a motion there.
I have a problem with that.
Uh, so what I'm saying is you're saying all or nothing, but you're okay with doing this, but not okay with doing that one. I feel it's important about the ones that need to be transparent, the ones that need to be held to an accountability level and a set of rules that need to be streamed. Geez, that's where I'm looking for. That that's kind of where I'm coming from, but I I understand what you're saying. I would have a hard time going on there as well when I first started, I guess. Knowing that it's going to be streamed and I want to say something blunt to the point, but here we are.
Counselor Hughes.
I feel again, I guess, just to counter argument, you know, that live streaming makes everything very formal. And I think in terms of the sense of how MPC operates is people want to have an engaging discussion where they're not as formal and they're not weighing every single little points that they're making. So again, I would just reiterate that, you know, I don't think our public members are going to be in favor of it whatsoever. I think we will lose people. And looking at the list of communities that are live streaming, you know, it's very, very small. There are not a lot of other towns doing MPC. So I don't know why we would hold our public members here to such a standard at this point in time. So I am not in favor of any of it.
Counselor Adams.
Make make motion. I like to task administration to change your bylaws and our policies of the municipal planning commission or whatever is involved in that to allow for live streaming.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. All those opposed? And that is defeated. Counselor Hughes.
I move to accept the electronic committee meeting report as information.
Any further discussion? Call the question those in favor. And that is carried.
Which one?
There you go.
Okay, now we can move push. It is finally your turn. Recycle Depot as per extended producer responsibility legislation.
Good evening, your worship and count council. So the purpose is the purpose of this report is to update council about towns recycle depot as per the new EPR legislation. The legislation came into effect November twenty twenty two. And starting April first, the packaging producers will be paying for collection, processing, education and sale of recycled materials going forward instead of taxpayers. So EPR shifts both financial and operational responsibility from local governments and taxpayers to the producer. And then they are accountable for managing their products end of life. So currently, Government of Alberta has appointed Alberta Recycling Management Authority, ARMA, as an oversight body. And then ARMA has registered producer responsibility organizations to help with different programs, specifically pack packaging and paper products, which would be more recycled. That will be seen by Circular Materials and then HSP, which is hazardous and special products will be overseen by call to recycle and product care recycling. Since the town is registered for this program, starting April first, twenty twenty five, producers will assume full responsibility for funding and operating both curbside recycling and community recycling depot. The recycling depot will continue to operate as usual, with the only change being that producer will reimburse the municipality for the program's operational cost. This reimbursement, this reimbursement is based on the actual cost incurred by municipality in twenty twenty three. So for town, the twenty twenty three actual cost for the contracted services at the depot was seventy nine thousand, hundred and fifty seven dollars. And the cost for public works crew to maintain the depot was twenty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, which includes upkeep of depot site and maintaining the brush bins and grass clippings. There was also a cost of four thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars to power the perimeter lights at the depot site. Circular Material has proposed a compensation of four thousand, five hundred and sixty eight months, sixty dollars per month, translating it to fifty four thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars for the year. The proposed compensation is also subject to yearly adjustment for inflation based on consumer price index increases. Comparing this to twenty twenty three actual cost, the variance is twenty four thousand, three hundred and forty one dollars, which will need to be covered by municipality. Our recycle depot is unstaffed and ungated, making it challenging to control the contamination of the recyclable materials. And hence, only seventy percent of the contracted costs are covered. Upon acceptance of the compensation amount, a contract will be signed for initial term of eighteen months with possibility of for extension for up to three one year terms. Since the cost of of the town's recycle depot is passed on to ratepayers, the compensation provided under the new EPR legislation will lead to savings for residents. Town's finance department will be reviewing and adjusting the rates as the program is implemented. Our recommendation, council, is to accept the proposed compensation offered by Circular Materials for the community recycle depot and proceed with finalizing the agreement. Any questions?
Counselor Adams.
Quick question. What is the funding structure on this? I believe we pull it out of our taxation and doesn't MD pay a portion of it?
Yeah, so how it works is they pay twenty four point some percent and then we cover the seventy seventy five point some percentage. So that is how it's.
So this is our portion or is this a?
No, this is only, this is only our portion.
Okay. And then in order to move from seventy percent up, what is it that they would require for that to have?
So I asked the same question to them. However, they said for the first eighteen months, they would like to see how efficient depot operations are. And based on that, they will make a decision as to going forward in the second phase if they will fund depot operations or if they would like to go some other route. So so for now, they said just don't do anything, don't put security, don't add any, any, any gates or nothing, just yeah, just let's see the first eighteen months and then decide.
And this is and the MD covers part of this?
Uh, for.
The recycle, like our recycle center in town.
So yes, so the contracted services, the cost for the contracted services are shared between us and the MD.
And this is managed by the Waste Commission?
Yes.
They collect the funds and then?
Yes.
The money you're referring to?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
There was just some discussion on the waste.
That's outside the Waste Commission. This that. That's outside the Waste Commission, this, that depot. So why would the money go to Waste Commission?
So that's my, that's what I was getting to.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's, I'm, I'm getting to that point. So the reason, the reason why I'm asking that the MD funds part of that um, is because there's been some confusion and I think we have a report or there was supposed to be a report or I meant for there to be a report coming, more information um, on the um, on the recycle center because the Waste Commission um, is questioning if it's an in and out for the Waste Commission, if we're giving the Waste Commission funds and the Waste Commission is turning around. And from the MD members of the Waste Commission, their perspective is that it was a hundred percent town thing and wasn't funded at all by the MD. So my confusion now is legitimate confusion. I'm not sure who funds what. And it, if it needs to run through the Waste Commission, why it's running through the Waste Commission, I'm, I'm, we're a little lost. Counselor Gavlin.
This could be completely, completely wrong, like, but sometime a long time ago, and I might be, I wish Roland was sitting here because he would remember something like this. They wanted it running through the Waste Commission because of the previous user and it was like they're actually making some sort of money. It worked better to take it from them, rather go elsewhere. There, it would, at some point, I believe it was a push to run it through there because it made more sense.
Okay.
And even then it didn't actually make sense to me, but that, at some point, I believe that was easier for them.
And I think when it started, Waste Commission was also looking after not just recycle depot, but their own transfer stations as well. That's why it was all lumped together in a bigger service, just to secure better pricing. I, and that is my assumption, right? Yeah.
It made way more sense for them. They, so.
So from the perspective of the executive and the, the financial of the Waste Commission, we were told that, like, the members on cap, this council were told we needed to go talk to our administration and find out how the dollars actually flow. Uh, because if it's, they were told it was just an in and out is what we've been repeatedly told for this budget. I'm new to the Waste Commission, so that's why I don't have all this history on that. Counselor Gavlin.
Question, so the uh, the MD reps think that they're, they're, the folks in the MD don't use that? Is that why they don't want to do it? Because I, I see more people there from the MD using it and uh, I often make jokes, you guys aren't paying enough for this, but uh, they, it's used by a lot of residents in the MD.
We were told that it was the in and, in and out from the town, so then we weren't, they didn't understand why it was still running through the Waste Commission because we can handle our own finances and we can handle an in and out, it seemed. But if there is a portion that is being paid by the MD, I think A, I'm gonna need some more information for the next, next uh, Waste Committee meeting. Um, and maybe Roland's perspective on that because he's got all the, the history there. But there's confusion around the recycling center, who pays for what? Um, if it's just town or if it is in fact split? And that.
Is the confusion around the recycling center, the holdup on you guys completing your budget?
No.
No, okay, I was just curious.
No, that is, that is not the confusion on that.
And also like Waste Commission also requested us because now they have facility that can accept more recyclable materials, right? So they also requested us to see if we can do an RFP for our recycle depot and you know, get into an agreement where we dictate where the recyclable materials is going. Uh, so we ran this by Circular Material. However, they said for the first eighteen months, we really cannot do anything. We cannot change because this recycling material, like recyclable materials is already called for at a facility in Edmonton. So they already have a contract in the background, so we really cannot change. I would love to help commission, you know, with wherever we can, but it's just, we are just stuck in this, right? We tried three times, three different times.
Counselor Adams.
I'm a little confused on this because um, Waste, correct me if I'm wrong, Waste Commission does not handle our in-town.
Curbside, no.
Right?
No.
So this uh, seventy-nine thousand here uh, bid was part of that bid package. So how would it be if it's all in one bid package? Why is it being, why would it be paid before by the Waste Commission? I'm confused. I thought this was paid here. It was a separate agreement. It was much the same as what it was for the, for the dog pound. Same idea with the split. And uh, that's where it went from what I remember because I remember trying to shut this down when I first got on council, this whole thing.
Counselor Gavlin.
Alex, is Roland in his office still?
No.
No, okay, if he's, uh, he would have some clarification.
And, and the way we have seen invoices for the contracted services at recycle depot, the invoices go to Waste Commission directly. And the Waste Commission invoice town back for their seventy-five percent. And they pay twenty-four percent uh, through MD.
When do you need a decision by?
So this one, we need decision by fourteenth of, I just found out like last week when I was in middle of training and we need fourteenth of uh, March, right? Or else we, we can, we can still push back, but the program won't start until July first if we push back.
Counselor Adams.
I don't think this will be necessarily impacted by Waste Commission or town or whatever. It's a matter of fifty-four thousand goes into that pot, correct? So tha- that being said, I move that council directs administration to accept the proposed compensation offered by Circular Materials for the community recycle depot and proceed with finalizing the agreement.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. And I would like to make a second request for the management task list. I would like a uh, report to come on the um, recycling depot, but specifically with regards to the funding. Who funds what, where, flow of, flow of funds? And a bit of background from whatever we have. Um, and preferably uh, before the next ca, like for the next council meeting. I know it's a sho, a tight timeline, uh, but the Waste Commission meeting will be coming up shortly and I'd like to have that prepared for it. Okay, uh, called a question those in favor? And that is carried.
Dan, thank you.
Thank you. CIO update.
Once again, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, so bringing forth the update today uh, on the finance department. They continue to focus on the year-end tasks with the auditors scheduled to be on site, March twentieth and twenty-first. In the human resources department, we do have some current job openings. Uh, the big one being the chief administrative, administrative officer, which has a closing date of the end of March. Uh, utilities administrative assistants, some uh, casual reckless services representative and some lifeguards. We uh, recently this week, our new administrative CIO and HR person started. Uh, we had a junior lifeguard start and at the beginning of February, our peace officer started, a new peace officer. Uh, ongoing review of health and safety training needs to ensure compliance with this year's upcoming audit, uh, which will be an external audit this year for health and safety. So all the departments are working on gathering info for that. Uh, in operations, they were, as you were last week, uh, doing drainage. We had, we warmed up very quickly, so working on drainage, spring cleanup and the chlorine system maintenance. Uh, they were also doing some patching and um, lights on the poles came down last week. Uh, in the plan development, uh, we're still working on the municipal development plan and land use bylaw project. Uh, there is an open house, a land use bylaw open house tomorrow night in the council chambers. Uh, March twelfth from five to seven PM. Uh, also, uh, many departments, including plan development, were working on incident command training. Uh, a bunch of uh, administrative were away last week in some high-level training and we have a bunch of new um, certified uh, people in that. In the fire departments, uh, as of March uh, fourth, we were at a hundred and eleven calls. I said they, they were at a hundred and eleven calls. Uh, just up slightly from last year. Uh, the calls for February were forty-eight, which uh, was the highest February uh, since tracking in twenty-ten. The regional fire chief, as you're aware, is sitting, uh, giving you this report today. So our deputy chief is the acting fire chief and some of our paid-on-call members have stepped up to fill in shifts at the fire hall to help with that gap. So they're getting an opportunity to to assist at the fire hall, um, while this, this is taking place. Uh, there was a uh, application for the wooi team, which as of today, we still haven't heard. So we're forty-five days outside of their schedule. I won't comment on that. In the enforcement services, we had seven complaints last week or last month. In February, our bylaw officer, our peace officer, sorry, is doing bylaw and working on things like that until he gets his peace officer appointments. So a new peace officer in town has to go through the pro, the uh, provincial uh, qualifications. So he has to submit all his paperwork and they have to do some internal reviews before he actually gets his appointment. So you've probably seen the car out driving around. It has the out of service on the light bar. So he's, he's basically um, just handling bylaw and complaints and things like that right now. Uh, community services, uh, two new lifeguards, um, with one starting in April, instructor course is taking place. Uh, all of the available swim private rental times are fully booked until the end of April. There's a spring, there's spring break, public swims coming up from one to three daily. And April thirteenth is a free family swim sponsored by ATB. In the FCSS volunteer tax program for seniors and low-income residents is started at the first week of March and runs to the end of April at the MRC in, in the lobby. And you can go on the Towne and Slave Lake website for that, for more information. With programming, uh, the female eighteen playoffs happened last weekend as well as volleyball. Uh, quick shout out to the female girls for, Slave Lake girls for going undefeated and heading to provincials along with a couple of other teams representing Slave Lake. And also to all the staff at the MRC for um, keeping the facility running this weekend uh, and doing a great job with all of the out-of-town guests. The spring break camp at the end of the month is accepting registration and stats, the staff have lots of fun activities planned, including a trip to the Boreal Center. The upcoming Treaty Eight hockey tournament at the MRC from March twenty-seventh to thirtieth. There'll be approximately thirty teams coming to town to play in that tournament. Minor baseball has started their indoor preseason practices at, as of March third at the MRC. And the MRC staff, programming staff is looking at the feasibility of using Arena Two as a potential pickleball center from April until June, um, when there's no ace in the back rink. And it will get some more information on that at the next council meeting. And the Legacy Center has seven uh, bookings coming up for the month of, of March. Any questions?
Counselor Adams.
Uh, and for the events and stuff that we hold at the MRC, do we do anything that has to do with calculation on municipal impact or anything like that? Or how do we quantify what this, what's happening? Because I remember from tourism, I believe you used to do that with.
Counselor Hughes.
I didn't do it myself, but what I was gonna chime in with was previously Jason had used an economic calculator that he had to compile that type of data for us because he had numbers from previous Treaty Eight um, hockey tournaments or other kind of events that we had. Um, so that would be something that I would love to see done for this upcoming event. Um, and that kind of leads into my, my question as well. Was that your only one, Counselor Adams?
Yep, that latter.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to see if we could track that in some way. On that note, I was going to actually comment on the same. Uh, with thirty teams coming into town, that is a significant influx of people. Um, previous years I've had a couple, a bit of commentary just from the business community in terms of letting them know that we are hosting such a large event because for instance, some of our food providers, et cetera, they order more and they prepare staffing levels, et cetera. Um, so I would actually love to see the town kind of put this information out, maybe on Voyant, on social media a little bit more and just kind of make sure that the community is aware that we are going to expect this influx of people and give them the opportunity to make the most of it, so.
So we will, I will reach out to our uh, pre-service and dev to talk about the impact and get, and gather that information. On the other, on your other point, um, duly noted, we heard those comments last year.
Yeah.
We've already um, reached out to the community businesses to let them know this is happening.
Okay.
Um, and we will advertise uh, that the event is happening as well on our social media. But yes, we heard that message last, loud and clear last year. That when we're planning these big events, we need to let people know.
Yeah, you betcha, yeah. Um, and I would even go so far as to say having some of our own resources available at the MRC couldn't hurt us either. Uh, Jason did a great experience Slave Lake map where it's kind of like a map for people who are visiting the area. It lays out, you know, where things are located as well. So perhaps there's a bit of pre-planning we could do in that regard as well, so that we're really prepared and um, supporting our business community. Uh, my one other comment uh, that I wanted to make was actually just in regards to operations. I just wanted to say thank you to all those gentlemen, uh, when we were thawing like crazy, there was water pooling on the roads and those guys were working overtime. Um, I saw them out very late at night and very early in the morning. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to them for their dedication and and very long hours that it takes to kind of keep that water off the roads and keep our infrastructure in okay shape.
Counselor Adams.
Move to accept the CEO update for March twenty twenty-five as information.
Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Any questions on the management task list? Counselor Adams.
Uh, I know we've got some there on the update for the planning development one for off-site levies. Do we have an idea on timeline for that? It's just been there a long time, two years.
Due date says September first, twenty twenty-five, though.
Is that when we?
That is the, that is the estimate date that.
That's the estimate?
Yeah, so it is going to be a longstanding item and will be on there. So, and that's the estimated date. I'm not going to speak for the department, but that's what we have.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Counselor Hughes.
Um, move to accept the task list for March twenty twenty-five as information.
Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. That is carried. Anything in question period? Counselor Adams.
Uh, I've had a few um, residents come to me to discuss a, a couple of questions they have in regards to CN rail. Um, with the snow going away early, you can see it a lot more clearly, but there's trees growing in their ditches. There's that increased vegetation. And I know we do a spring burn, but from what I understand, there's always been uh, an issue with CN rail and getting that lined up. I'm just wondering if you could shed some light on that? Or if there is a plan to deal with the trees that are growing, things like that?
So I'll put my other hat on for a second, my fire chief hat. Uh, you're right, we, we used to um, burn in all our communities along the CN tracks. They've made it a little bit harder over the last um, couple of years. We do, we worked through this in twenty twenty-three into twenty twenty-four. We have a contact now. Uh, I, I will reach out about the trees, um, and then see where they're at. Uh, so now we have to kind of give them a heads up of that window of when we're gonna burn. The other issue is that sometimes fire season springs up on us very quickly and we don't have manpower and we miss that window. Um, which has happened for the last couple of years. So uh, forestry is giving us a prediction of a bit wetter spring this year, fingers crossed. Uh, we will try to get some of that done, but sometimes it's just a timing and manpower issue as well. But I will reach out to CN on the trees and, and ask them if they have a plan for some of that other growth.
So it usually is a challenge with trying to get CN to agree. That's where we had that breakdown last year. I remember a fire occurring over there.
Yeah, so um, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a bit of an issue with permission. Um, they wanted us to basically pay to enter their property to burn their grass and to try and prevent. So we've worked through that legality now, I believe. It's a, it's more of a communication. Um, now it's, it's manpower on the fireside, just with the amount of how busy we are and getting volunteers to come out in that prime window of two to five PM to burn that, that grass. So uh, lots of things need to happen. And then sometimes just with how busy we are, we miss that window and the hazard becomes too high and then we can't do the burning, so.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, we're gonna move forward then into our committee minutes. Watershed.
Okay, that's me. Um, the LSWC has increased staffing capacity with the addition of Jess Lario, the new watershed science and stewardship coordinator. We're currently advertising for a full-time communication and administrative support person. And we'll be hiring a summer intern to support fieldwork and events over the summer. Um, we're also collecting under ice lake water quality samples and measurements as part of the provincial water lake keepers program led by the Alberta Lake Management Society. LSWC will sample near Juicard and near Asinew in January, February and March. Lesser Slave River and tributaries repairing intactness assessment project is progressing on scheduling and a final report and data will will be released in March. Uh, the LSWC will be holding its twenty twenty-five AGM on June nineteenth. Twenty twenty-five details will be shared shortly. And a summary of the twenty twenty-four tributary water quality monitoring results will be available by April, uh, which includes Martin River and Lesser Slave River. Thank you.
Housing, that is me. Um, quick update from housing. Um, the Heart River Housing, who's, which is the organization that we contract our CIO through for um, Lesser Slave Lake Region Housing Authority is in the recruitment process and we expect to hear updates this month regarding their selection. We, some statistics, so the overall waitlist increased uh, in December, it was at eighty-five and in January it's at ninety-four. Um, the largest increase is in your senior self-contained and Vanderwell Heritage Place, which has gone from twenty-one to twenty-six. Um, for comparison, about a year ago, there were six seniors on the waitlist. Um, all the trends with regards to housing that we learn at conferences is that our needs for senior self-contained housing is growing exponentially and faster than most municipalities, especially rural can keep up. Um, with that said, we're working with our uh, local METI organization, hopefully on what will be a, a development of, of a new build. There's some partnership going on. There's some partnership going on there between the housing authority and there's been a a letter of basically. Commitment to each other to work towards the potential development of a new building that would contain both senior self-contained as well as social housing. There is a sewer renovation going on in the apartments where there will be, there will be nine that can remove. Come out of social housing back into the apartment building. The sewer renovation, as with all things construction related, takes longer and it's extended a couple of months past initially identified. And that's about it for me. Try Council Health?
That's me again. As we're with. The, there's a creation of four provincial health agencies, which is primary care Alberta. Primary care, acute care, continuing care and recovery Alberta. Recovery Alberta is already functioning. And with these creations, I think one of the biggest advantage that was shared is that because they're much smaller groups. There'll be access to executive leadership quicker than it was with A H S. Acute care is supposed to be launching in the spring. Which I think has already launched. And. Cancer Care Alberta is probably the last that will go into effect. Lots of conversations. About having slave lake becoming a can, a center for infusion. Locally, not much has changed for us and not much should change. We have one doctor who has left and this puts a dent in opening our E R. As there are lots of moving parts. When it comes to having our E R open. But our, our health team are looking at bringing in another physician into the community to fill that gap. There hasn't been a lot of success with hiring M P's, N P's right now. There's about six vacancies in slave lake. Our clinics are opening until nine P M and we've. Gotten good reviews about that. That's helped reduce the. Use of our emergency. And E R, our E R at the hospital. February visits are down. From previous months. There, the hospital in February saw six hundred and six thousand, six hundred and sixty five patients. Who are. Attached and four thousand, one hundred and twelve patients who are unattached and patients who are unattached are those that do not have. A family doctor or a primary doctor assigned to them. The average wait time. Is about two point five days to a maximum of seven days in the month of February to see a doctor. Alberta Rural Health Week is. Twenty sixth to the thirtieth of May and it will be a barbecue being that is going to be held on Friday, May thirtieth at the hospital from one thirty. To four P M. And lastly, our tri council team was tasked to work with our communities to gather. What our healthcare needs are in this area. So we'll be working on a survey to help capture the public's perspective on this. And with that, I would like to make a motion tasking admin to look into a survey option for tri council health.
Any discussion on that, Counselor Adams?
Are you looking for the town to run the survey or is it more for notification that there is a survey?
It it's a bit of both. I think it's something that. We would like to hear from our individuals within our community and because. The town is, is where the hospital is and a lot of people in our community use that hospital. I think it's, it's, there's a lot of benefit in us running that and getting that information to help. Our, our area.
That's right.
In that case, I'd like to see much along those same lines. If you're gonna toss that, I'd like us to use engaged slave lake. And maybe even notifications through buoyant in order to broadcast that out there. And also share it with the M D to see if they would do that because our hospital here impacts such a wide service area. It's a little crazy.
And I think that's why we left it a bit. And I think that's why we left it a big vague so that they come back with a lot of what that would look like for us. And I think that's part of what.
Yeah, administration can bring back options if you want. It can be at this table, but it would most likely be directly to the tri council health table. And then from there, tri council health can proceed with how they would like to conduct the survey. But yes, we would be most likely. Telling them that like these are all of our avenues, engage slave lake, buoyant. So we will be providing that information.
Counselor Hughes?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that the idea behind Counselor Choa's motion was just recognizing the fact that the town has the most resources to assist. The health committee in this survey and kind of reaching the public. So we just want to see what administration thinks would be. You know, some viable options to take back to the health committee. But the goal here overall is essentially just to hear from the community in general. Things that are working, things that aren't. It's not going to be a very extensive survey, but just basic points. To take back to, you know, our providers and sort of say, hey, you know, these are the overarching issues that you guys need to be working on. And I think on the committee with these new acute care, et cetera, they're really looking for local healthcare committees to take on that advocacy role. And do that, you know, in a little bit of a different way than we have been doing. So this is kind of the first steps to changing that.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we get behind that and including the M D and the Sarge First Nation as well. We need to see something move forward with our health for sure. I I like this. If it's gonna get traction up the line, I say we support it, whatever it is.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor and that is carried. Tourism.
Okay, so tourism is hosting a lunch and learn with Indigenous Tourism Alberta on March nineteenth at the Northern Lakes College. This is a free event. We only have a few spots left, but I think there's maybe five, six spots left, I want to say, as of earlier this afternoon. In negative news, unfortunately, we did not receive any funding for our upcoming beach fest event from Travel Alberta this year. We submitted a grant back in November under the Events and Festivals Grant on the Travel Alberta website. And we were told no other reason for the decline of this grant other than they have an overabundance of submissions and that was it. We are supremely disappointed at this turn of events, not even being given, you know, nominal amount is a little bit frustrating. I am curious and would like to follow up with what other northern areas may be receiving for. Events of this kind, as I can't help but feeling that most of the budgeting goes to Jasper and Banff and events that are held in southern Alberta. We are, however, receiving community donations at this time, thank goodness. So this year's event. What that looks like obviously will be reflected within the budget that we have to work with. We did see really, really great numbers last year. So with growth comes more expense as well. So it's going to be concerning and kind of a delicate balance this year, but we do have every intention, obviously, moving forward with beach fest and looking forward to watching that grow. And then with regards to our growth plan as well, we have invoiced all municipalities and nations joining us. We provided welcome packages to them as well as welcome packages to any current tourism operators throughout the slave lake region. And and beyond, it's actually the A N C A boundary is what we're working with right now. So they have access to all the resources and information that we have currently and we will keep working on getting our new. Municipalities and nations to the table and their representatives so that we can kind of expand and start, start our growth project here. So very exciting. It's nice to see some movement on those items.
Yeah, like a first meeting date or anything yet?
Well, I was hoping for March, but everything is moving quite slow with them. So I'm thinking realistically. Mid to end of April is kind of what my target has been now. So.
I would, is everyone from ANSA signed up?
Yes, basically everybody is now. Yep.
Maybe you could piggyback off our next answer meeting and then everyone's there anyway. It's hard to get everyone from all around in one spot. We can take that offline after, but just to suggest.
It definitely is. Yeah, that's why it's nice to be able to use a little bit of that ANSA platform just to reach. All of those parties and all of the leadership in those areas. But yeah, I will mention that to Jen. That's always a great, great thing that we can do. So.
Move on to library then.
For the library, they've submitted all their financials to the auditor now, moving forward with that. They're in the process of reviewing library board policies, board governance documents, employee, employment policies, et cetera. That's kind of been kicked off and something that we're gonna carry on for the rest of the year. Also, I know I'm gonna get this right wrong, but. We've had discussion or we've been in cooperation with Daniel Grant, who I believe is the master brewer over at Dog Island. I think anyways, but he was nice enough to help out the library with the, an Instagram video about library services. It was created and posted on to their site and he's also helping to continue that. As an ongoing thing with the library, it's very nice of him to help us out with that from Dog Island. They sent in. They've sent in their summer reading club subsidy applications to P L S for all three libraries. So we're hoping to see that come in. And also, this is a big one. They've started setting up the library of things. They're currently working with P L S to catalog the items and to have them coded. It's a lot of work and it's ongoing, but it's nice to see this actually getting traction moving forward. As far as library and their programming, they've had good uptick in February with that. They had eight, an attendance level of eight hundred and forty for the programming. That's not attendance for the library, but attendance to their actual programs. Which is really nice to see. That's total of twenty seven programs that had eight hundred and forty people participating. And that's about it.
Okay, N P C.
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we approved an occupying space permit for a temporary C can. We approved an application for a secondary suite within an R one. And we motioned to support the approval of the Town of Slave Lake bylaws, the zero one twenty twenty five and zero two twenty twenty five. Which were the amendments to that land use designation from natural environment to the open space. So those were both supported by N P C. And then we also did approve a referral letter back to the M D. But they wanted our feedback on for a placement of two camp shacks on a light industrial lot on Tamarack Road.
And then for waste, we had our meeting, I think it was middle or beginning of February. Our commissioner is going to be hosting the care conference in slave lake in September. A couple other highlights from the agenda is there's a current review of the tipping fees. An update for management regarding facility operations, having some struggles again with mattresses and. The inability to recycle those and looking at creative options for that. And then some review of the draft budget that is still in progress. Counselor Chova.
Motion to accept committee meeting as information.
Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. That is carried. So we will move forward into state of the lake. Counselor Chova.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize someone who has become a good friend to me and that person is councillor Sean Gramble. Who celebrated his birthday this past Friday. Sean has been an instrumental advocate for our town, continuously championing. Championing initiatives that strengthen our community. From his dedication to local development, to his tireless work in bringing exciting events to our region. His effort has left a lasting impact in our community. His passion for our town, his leadership and his commitment to making slave lake a better place are truly commendable. So on behalf of our council and the community, Sean, we appreciate all you do and. We do hope you had a fantastic birthday.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a spiel. Go ahead.
Um, R C A already touched on it, but I did just want to remind everybody that we do have an open house tomorrow night. To review the land use bylaw and our municipal development plan. And it would be nice to have the public come out and engage with council. So please come out from five to seven.
I do have a long one, so.
I just wanted to say we lost a longstanding community member yesterday, Ted Conrad. So if you've. Been around the ball divins or the hockey rink for probably thirty years now, you'd see or know who Teddy was. So I just want to say to his family, we're all thinking of him and we'll miss Ted.
So I just want to take a moment to address the recent removal of Scott Sinclair or M L A for Lesser Slave Lake from the U C P caucus. While this is a provincial matter, it undoubtedly has local implications. Our council is in full support of M L A Sinclair for his continued advocacy for our community's needs and for speaking out on the significant oversight of rural Alberta in budget twenty twenty five. We remain committed to working with the provincial government regardless of political changes to ensure that our resident, the needs of our residents are met. And we will continue advocating for our region and holding our provincial representatives accountable for the commitments made to our community. Last week, our council attended the Alberta Municipalities Spring Caucus event. This was a valuable opportunity to engage with municipal leaders from across the province. And it was clear that we are not alone in our concerns about budget twenty twenty five. There was significant support from fellow mayors and councillors who share our frustrations and concerns about the impact this budget will have on municipalities. Particularly, particularly in rural and northern communities. The growing disconnect between municipal needs and provincial decisions was a common theme in discussions and I want to assure residents that we will continue to push for fair and sustainable funding for our community. While at the event, we also had the opportunity to meet with Minister Devon Dreschen, who's the Minister of Transportation, to discuss critical infrastructure concerns. One of the key outcomes of that discussion is the province's commitment to hosting a town hall in slave lake this spring regarding the engineering. Design and progress of Highway eighty eight. So this is a significant step forward in ensuring transparency and engagement with our community on this much needed project. And we look forward to seeing progress in the months ahead. We'll announce when this town hall will be once we hear back from their administration, but they have committed to this and we are going to hold them to that. Our ability to provide essential services and infrastructure depends on a strong partnership with the province and we will not back down in advocating for slave lake. I look forward to further discussions with council and our residents as we navigate these challenges together. Counselor Hughes.
Motion to go into closed session.
Any further discussion? Call to question those in favor and that is carried.